Hear me to inhale enough paint today. Everything was just black. I'm like, well, that worked well.
All right, six thirty, we will call the Monday, April twenty fifth, twenty twenty two, regular city council meeting to order. If we could please start with the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do we have any additions to the agenda tonight?
I do not have any.
Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion.
Second, we have a motion, a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. We'll open up for public comments. If there's anyone who would like to discuss anything that is not on the agenda, please come forward. And seeing no one, we'll close public comments, move consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that needs to be pulled for further discussion? Hearing none, we'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, and motion carries five zero. That will move us to a public hearing. We'll open the public hearing. Maggie, do you need to talk first, or do we, should I just open it first and then you'll discuss?
Um, you can open it and then I will.
Okay. We'll open the public hearing for the issuance of conduit revenue bonds by the city of mayor for Crown College. So if there's anyone, oh, go ahead, Maggie, you can start off.
Yeah, I'll do a quick, quick presentation, and then we'll accept comment. So Mayor Dodge and Council, this evening you are being asked to conduct a public hearing on the issuance of conduit revenue bonds by the city of mayor for Crown College. So a little history, early in the year, the city was contacted and asked to consider acting as an issue of bank qualified revenue bonds to Crown College. As you know, Crown College is nearby. Right outside of Saint Bonnie in Lake Town Township, Lake Town Township. And so the request and information was presented to the city council at the January twenty fourth, twenty twenty two city council meeting. And at that time, the city council approved moving forward as acting as an issuer. So part of that process is holding a public hearing in which we are conducting this evening. Again, I, I just want to go over just a little bit of the basics, just again, just again, with some updates. So the proceeds of the bonds will be going for a project that Crown College is doing. So it's going to finance a new residence hall and will refinance some other projects that they had done in the past. And it, again, it's at their campus in Lake Town Township. So as you know, we've gone over state and federal law allows local government units to enter into arrangements to issue tax exempt obligations and loan the proceeds to a nonprofit organization so that they're able to finance or refinance capital expenditures. This allows nonprofits to reduce their borrowing costs. So again, the city will enter into a loan agreement with Crown College under which Crown College agrees to pay the principal and interest on the bonds. And then the city will assign all the rights to payment of the payments to the lender. And in this case, the lender will be Old National Bank. So the agreement is written in a way that the city is not liable for any of the bonds, and it is, does not impact the city's credit rating. And on an annual basis, the city is limited to ten million bank qualified bonds. And the city, it's good timing because the city does not have any bonds that it's issuing for any projects in twenty twenty two, and so that's why we're able to help. The financial need for the project is about fifteen million. It might be a little, I think there's a cushion being built in a little bit, but Crown College is also working with Saint Bonnie, City of Saint Bonnie, and then Lake Town Township as well as financial partners. So we're expected for our portion to issue about seven million, seven hundred fifty thousand. However, the resolution includes a not to exceed eight point five million to provide sufficient flexibility. And then the city of mayor, as part of this process, we do have a policy in place that provides guidance and procedures. We've been working with Bond Council, Taft, Stetness, and Hollister for the issuance, so they are kind of making sure that everything is in place where it should be as far as documentation and procedures. They've been great to work with. And so just a little history too, we've done this before, most recently for Groves Academy in Saint Louis Park in twenty twenty one, and then Mayor Lutheran High School in twenty twenty. So with that, I'm recommending holding the public hearing on the issuance of the conduit revenue bonds by the city of mayor for Crown College. All the documentation has been provided in the packet, and then the resolution approves the issuance of the bonds and the execution of related documents. So with that, we can go into the public hearing.
If anyone who would like to come up and speak, feel free. If you don't mind stating your name for the, for the.
I'm Mike Price. I'm the chief operating officer at Crown College. So thanks for the opportunity, and we're really grateful that Mayor has decided to come alongside Crown and partner on this really significant project for us. I've not been to a city council meeting, so I'll probably take this off my bucket list now after today. So thanks for giving me the opportunity to do that. And like Maggie said, we are, we are desirous of building a new residence hall. We've looked at a couple of opportunities to do some remodeling, and we don't feel like that's sufficient for what our students need in terms of our facilities and what we want to provide. And we really feel like the best opportunity for us is to build a new residence hall. It's a hundred, it'll room about a hundred and fifty students. It'll be a three story, about nine rooms on each floor, capacity about six rooms, or six, about six people in each room. So we're excited about the opportunity, and again, just thankful for the opportunity to have this partnership and grateful for you coming alongside us and to help us do this. So I'm happy to address or answer any questions that you might have.
Perfect. Any questions? Perfect. Well, thank you. Thanks for coming in. I appreciate it. Anyone else? If anyone else would like to speak, please come forward. Seeing none, Maggie, are there any phone calls or emails that need to be addressed or formally documented?
We did not receive any phone calls or emails.
All right, thank you. All right, one more. Anyone else? All right, with that, then we'll close the public hearing. Six thirty eight. So with that, if there's no other questions or comments, I'll look for a motion to approve resolution four dash twenty five dash twenty two dash twelve.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. I appreciate it. Yeah, you also. All right, Maggie, with that, we'll move to seven A one, the interim city administrator appointment.
All right, one second. All right, Mayor Dodge and Council, with the recent resignation of the city administrator, the city council has started the process to search for a new city administrator. We're currently working with an executive search firm. That process is underway, and it's going well. And we are meeting the timelines that, that, that we've played, put in place. So at the April eleventh, twenty twenty two city council meeting, the city council directed the personnel committee to seek an interim city administrator that would be able to perform the city administrator duties until the next city administrator is hired. So in the process of seeking an interim administrator for that position, the city was contacted by the previous city administrator who served, who offered to serve in this position until the city can find a replacement. So at the April twentieth Personnel Committee meeting, there was discussion on contracting with Luanne Rouge, sorry, for the interim position. The Personnel Committee recommended to the city council hiring Luanne for the interim with the following terms. The salary would be seventy five dollars an hour, mileage reimbursement, twenty to twenty four hours per week, and a period between tentatively May sixteenth to September second. So the, again, the, so with that, those terms, the total estimated financial costs of the interim agreement would be about thirty seven thousand. The Personnel Committee feels that Luanne knows the city well and would be able to jump in and perform the duties of the city administrator throughout this period. So they, right now, the contract, what the city council is being asked to consider is approving, sorry, moving forward with hiring Luanne for the interim position and moving forward with drafting a contract that would be, that would have those terms involved. So the actual contract would come to the city council at the May ninth meeting if approved to move forward. So with that, the Personnel Committee is recommending that the city council approve hiring Luanne with those terms.
Perfect, thank you. Any questions or clarification needed on this?
Yeah, I guess I'm curious as to, right, her departure, right? I know a little bit about why she left the city or was, her contract was not renewed, why we feel that now she would be qualified and our best candidate.
Let's, with that, more, it will be discussion if we get a motion in a second, then we'll revisit that if we do. So with that, I'll look for a motion to enter into contract with Luanne Rouge to fill in as interim city administrator for seventy five dollars an hour plus mileage reimbursement.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? And now, Peggy, we can address your.
Let me ask it again?
Nope. You want to. I feel Luanne's going to be a great addition. We know four years ago, she was our permanent administrator, and we, at that point, her contract was not renewed. But at this time, for an interim to be able to jump in, know the city, know the people, know the staff, and I think we're going to get a lot more bang for our buck than having someone else come in who doesn't really, they're going to spend half the time just catching up on our process, our systems. There was no initial anything negative to consider at that time that the contract wasn't renewed that may reflect on this. There wasn't anything that puts the city in any, any predicament as far as I'm concerned. I think she'll be a great addition. I think she'd be perfect for this role. Some of the other interims that we looked at, they were quite a bit more in price for a dollar, hourly fee. So that's where, that's where I stand. That's kind of where the Personnel Committee was thinking in our thought process. Nikki, add anything if you want.
No, I, you know, her contract just wasn't renewed, and the city was going in a different direction at the time. And I think she'd fit right in and be able to just keep everything moving forward. I think if we used a different interim, they would just keep things status quo, making sure that checks and balances are met during the interim period where actually I feel this is a positive. There's not a lot of training, just catching up on where things are, and, you know, she knows how these meetings are run, she knows packets, and generating that will make it, I think, a pretty easy interim position while we're waiting to hire a new person.
Nice, easy transition, yeah.
Yeah, certainly an easy transition. I think our dollars that we'll be spending on this will be well spent because she will be able to handle other projects and do other things that we need versus, like Nikki said, just keeping the lights on and having, having a body in a chair.
Very familiar.
That's where Personnel Committee came with. Any other discussion?
Just had one question on our timeline. We're expecting to have someone hired full time by September second?
Yep.
Yeah, I think they are tentatively supposed to get an offer at end of July, early August. And so it depends, again, on this person, where they're coming from, because I'm just, I'm, I'm kind of doing the longer resignation time, which would be a month. Because some people can do shorter, some can do longer, so the longer end of that would be early September.
They factored in a month in case this candidate is an administrator in another city, and they have to give a month's notice per their contract. So it could be sooner. Any other discussion? That, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero, four one, I'm sorry. All right, with that, we'll move to seven A two, the American Rescue Plan Act.
Okay, Mayor Dodge and Council, this evening we will be reviewing an update on the American Rescue Plan Act's fund that the city of mayor received in twenty twenty one. So as you know, these funds were appointed or provided or approved by the United States Congress as recovery funds for local government entities in response to COVID nineteen. So in twenty twenty one, there was an interim ruling for how the funds could be used, and we've reviewed that. Those projects were things like public health, premium pay, utility infrastructure like water, sewer, and broadband, and then replacing lost revenue. When we looked, so we've talked about projects that would fit within that in the past. And we, I think there was kind of a consensus that there, that it was a little limited. And I think a lot of cities were experiencing that as well. We didn't fit the lost revenue algorithm that they provided to us, and so we weren't able to use to, to fit into that category. So in, in twenty twenty two, there was an updated final ruling that now provides more flexibility by allowing a standard, standard allowance for revenue loss up to ten million rather than that revenue loss calculation. So with that, the city is now able to use the funds more flexible, in a more flexible way, and I'll review that in a second. So anything within that ten million, we can be flexible with. So we, we received two hundred and forty three thousand about, and so we are well within that dollar amount. So the new areas that we're able to use things for are road projects and maintenance, health services, general government services, updates to city facilities, and, and, and more. I think, I think I included more description in your packet. Again, so we did receive about two hundred and, I guess, two hundred forty four thousand in ARPA funds. So in order to use, utilize this final rule, the city of mayor does need to pass a resolution that's included in your packet stating intentions to do so, and we must do so by April thirtieth. Again, we will, if this is approved, then we'll, we will move into our other meeting, or, I apologize. And we'll discuss further, like what, some ideas of what we would spend that money on, again, with the greater flexibility. So with that, I am recommending that the city, the city council approve resolution four dash twenty five dash twenty two dash thirteen. That would elect the standard allowance provision and allow the city to use funds in, based on the final ruling.
All right, any questions? Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve resolution four dash twenty five dash twenty two dash thirteen.
Moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. That'll take us to city council reports. Councilmember Melander, anything to report on?
Nothing to report.
I talked to Pat Melvin at David Drones. We all did. That's all I have.
Good. And you were via phone?
Correct.
Good. All right, Councilmember McNeely.
I just had Personnel Committee last Wednesday, and we discussed it in today's meeting.
Perfect. Councilmember, help.
Nope, I'd board the Mariner.
Wonderful. And my only meeting was Personnel also, which we discussed today, so. With that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion, a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. We are adjourned. And we'll jump right into the city council workshop meeting, and we'll call that to order. And we can start with the ARPA funding, Maggie.
Okay, so I just wanted to bring this back quick for discussion, since we just passed the resolution. That allows us a little bit more flexibility. So again, we don't have to make any decisions tonight. I just wanted to bring it back just in case and give you an update exactly where we're at, because we do need to, we're going to start doing our reporting April thirtieth, and that's also when that resolution is due. So again, just wanted to give you an update. Again, these funds don't need to be spent until, I mean, we have a timeline. The deadline is December thirty first of twenty twenty four. So we do, again, have a greater time period than the other funds that we received in twenty twenty. So at this time, we've approved two, two projects. And that includes the fire department radios and, and antenna, and then we just approved an additional twelve fire department radios. And those were part of our capital improvement plan, so we were able to use ARPA funds instead of using our, kind of our capital funds that we reserve each year. Another project that I was going to bring up, that's the security system that we approved for city hall and the city buildings, would now be able to fit under this. So if you want, if you agree, we could bring that back to council, and instead of paying it out of our capital fund, we could essentially put it under ARPA if you're interested. Otherwise, that system was part of our CAP. We did, we did have funds for it. It's just, if we want to use those capital funds for another project instead, we could shift the security system under this. It, it really, it's really what we want, where we want to fund it through. I did provide some additional ideas, so the, where the money could be used. But again, we have time. We don't have to make any decisions tonight. So one would be fire department coveralls. There, there's thirty of them that we would purchase for three hundred thirty eight each. So the fire department uses these coveralls as, I, the fire chief said they're twenty years old. This is the first set that the fire department has purchased. Before that, they just would respond to medical calls in their clothes. And so these are more professional, and they kind of help keep any, anything that happens at the call, whether it's, there's blood or contaminants, it keeps it off of their clothes. So they will have to be replaced at some point anyways. Because again, they're twenty years old, but, so that's one of the, one of the, and we can go on to that more, in more detail. We can invite the chief to talk more about it, but that's an idea. And then also, I know when we originally did the city council audio visual updates, we had originally wanted to maybe do a, a system that would have two cameras and then the ability to to, I'm sorry, have, like, people who are zooming in or connecting in on YouTube, they can, you can go back and forth with the packet, so they'd be able to kind of interact more.
Camera would be on the screen, so they can see the screen, correct?
Yeah, so, yeah, we would have two screens, and then they'd be able to kind of shift, we, we'd have somebody, they'd be able to kind of shift back and forth and see what you're looking at. So I did get a quote for that as well, just for discussion purposes. And then, that's, that's, I just kind of did a, you know, again, we can use this for other projects that we're planning as well. I just kind of threw in a few ideas. I know we had originally talked about inflow infiltration for private properties as well, so. Again, just wanted to give you an update mostly, and then have any discussion that you wanted to this evening. Otherwise, this will be an ongoing item that we'll continue working through as, as in the next few years, as, as the timeline is, again, December thirty first of twenty twenty four, so.
Any thoughts on any of these or additional that we might want to add to the list? I'm sorry?
Trail lighting?
Yeah, I mean, that's something, I think you, again, under the new ruling, I think you can do infrastructure projects like that. So one thing we could do is we could get quotes and just see what it comes in at. Is there, I know there's a few parks that we were thinking about it, so I don't know if there was one you wanted to focus on or all of them.
I'd probably say for sure Old Schoolhouse.
Okay.
West Ridge.
And I'd agree with both those, because those are both parks that people walk through to get to downtown.
Right. And maybe some down, you know, I know there's a shorter path, but in Meadow Park.
Meadow, okay.
Because I don't, yeah, there's no parking over there, so that maybe would be.
Yeah, I think it's strictly just walk into the.
That's not a walk through, and they're like, they close at ten, but we could talk, I mean,
True, true.
Options there. I'm good with these. I like these. Could we do building infrastruc, like adding on to buildings, like Public Works?
Yeah, I think you can do, yeah, I think it includes building infrastructure as well, so.
I'm good with the list. I like it. I'm a little concerned with Project Five there, you know, coming in at thirty grand.
Right.
That, I mean, now we're looking at oh, well over sixty or seventy thousand we've invested in. Seems a little spendy to me.
Yeah, and I do think, like, what we're, like, what we have in place right now is sufficient. I do think it's working well. People are, I know they don't have the ability to really see what we're seeing, but they can pull up the packet. It is online, and they can follow along if they want to.
Do we have a lot of people, viewers on YouTube? Is there like a?
Two on right now.
Okay.
So yeah, there's a couple each night.
But does it justify, you know, another thirty thousand?
We'd have to look at that, and that, I.
I could see, like, maybe in the future.
If you have ten, twelve watchers, you know, every, every council meeting, I think, then it would definitely be a consideration.
Looked up there and.
And I think those are all good. Splashpad, I think we have, is going to be funded through it, so I would look at maybe somewhat, but again, we're down to a hundred and thirty five thousand dollars now, so it's not, I mean, we'll, we'll get through that, I think, fairly easy.
Yeah.
I do agree with the coveralls. Coveralls, I think we should do sooner than late. We might as well just pull the trigger on that, I think, for ten grand. If they're twenty years old, we should get new coveralls for these firefighters and our first responders, I, I believe, but.
But then I think we should stop there and
Yeah.
and, and talk about the rest.
Yeah, I like some of the infrastructure, right? The I and I.
Yeah.
Jetting, televising, you know, ensuring
Right.
long-term stability for the.
Something we could even do up to people's home, you know, from the road to the homes, too, and televising.
Yeah, that's what we were thinking, yeah.
I and I standpoint.
Yeah, we were thinking that the I and I, because we're actually, the city is pretty, in pretty good shape for our sewer, or, yeah, our wastewater system. We've, I think, I don't even know if we have any lining that we have to do either, like in the mains. A lot of our infrastructure is either new or we've already done the lining and upgrades. And so where most of the inflow, inflow and infiltration is likely is those residential lines. And we think that they're probably more so in the old part of town. So that's where we would focus. But again, it would kind of get that clean water out of the system. And it would, again, we would be doing less cleaning of clean water. So it would be a benefit to the entire community.
And I definitely agree with Chad that even, you know, that we, we stop now and take a good overall look on where we want to be. And we got other input we can get in, and this is nothing towards you, Maggie, by any means. But we have the interim who might have some suggestions.
Right.
Administrator, it's all who might have some other suggestions that he or she has seen in their communities or other communities that may be, that we haven't thought of. So.
We still have two years.
Right.
To actually allocate this money to projects. So I mean, I think we've allocated it well. It's just, you know, I agree, the coveralls isn't a bad idea just to do now since we don't really have that covered. Do you include the security system? Possibly, but we already allocated money for that.
Yeah, I mean, you don't have to. It was within our long-term plan anyways. We had it budgeted for. It's just kind of if you want to shift it or not.
That's kind of where I am with the coveralls. If we budgeted for those because we've needed them. You know, and that's already in the budget for the ten thousand. Either way, I think we should do that, but.
Right, because didn't we budget for the radios and stuff and now we're not using that? I know that's capital.
We, we, as far as, as far as our long-term plan, we were planning to levy for them through our budget in our, for three years. And instead, those were purchased ahead now because, one, because the, the cost was going to go up quite significantly. And that was kind of our way of doing it now instead of breaking it up over three years. So that was kind of just like a.
That was where it gets spent too, you know, we want to look at that, kind of spread it out as much as we can. And if we've already allocated almost eighty thousand for the fire department, maybe that, those coveralls can come out of the, their, their budget now. And then we, you know, try to spread through some other things too.
Yeah, right.
I think we have plenty of time to look at it. I think that's a great list. I would just maybe add on expanding the Public Works Building as a possibility.
It's a good idea. Or at least a part of it.
Right. Right, yeah. We know it won't cover it, but it, you know, if we could maybe throw fifty grand towards it.
So just for clarification, coveralls, did you want me to bring that to the next meeting? Or is that something you want me to see if they?
Why don't you take a look at the budget?
Okay.
See where we're at and maybe a couple of different options and we can talk about it.
Okay.
See what the chief's thoughts are on it.
Got it. And one thing too is.
I'm fine either way.
Okay.
Ends up that it, you know, another ten thousand out there, I'd be okay with that.
Okay. Yeah, and one thing that I, I think is on track to bring to you at the May ninth meeting is the long-term plan that I've been working on with the financial advisor. So you'll be able to see kind of the numbers there as well in each fund. So.
Perfect.
So we, we are planning on moving Project Three into the ARPA funds then?
Um, that is something we're still discussing, I think.
Well, I think since we, since we levy for the capital fund and this would save the capital fund thirty grand, it's a good move.
Well.
We can roll over to capital fund, right?
So the capital fund, that money is, we've been kind of, we've been putting money into that capital fund for the security system. So it's already in the capital fund. So we wouldn't be levying for that project in the future anymore, since it's already in there. Sorry, it's kind of.
What I'm saying would save us in the future, right?
I mean, you could then use that, those, you could reallocate those, that thirty thousand to another capital project in the future.
I like that idea.
It, it's kind of confusing. It's so flexible now that it's, you could do it either way. That's the thing.
I tend to think if we budgeted for it and already levied and we're getting the taxes from our resident, we just continue on as we were with that, pay for it. That gives us another thirty thousand five hundred that we can use.
Right.
For next year, you know, that might help with the levy next year. Or that's what I would think since we've already accounted for it. But, again, I could, I'm fine either way, really.
I think in the long run, it'll, either way, it'll balance out fine. Yeah.
Because then next year, we might just have a project coming out of the capital fund for thirty thousand. Just allocate it now, you know.
Yeah.
I would be fine either way.
That we don't have to levy for.
Yeah.
From our residents, but I think it all washes out. I mean, it's, it's great, you know, the two hundred and forty thousand will certainly.
I think it'd be different if we didn't have as many options as we did before. You know, we were very limited on what we could spend the money on and we're really struggling just to find projects that would align where now it's more open, that we have flexibility, that it's not as.
Right. Yeah, it's definitely a lot more flexible. So.
Because either way, this will reflect on all our residents over the time, over the next couple of years.
Right, right.
Yeah. All right. Anything else on that?
Did that cover the parking lot for Meadow parking lot, or Meadow Park? Is that a twenty twenty-four project?
It, it could go towards that. So that'll be, that would be discussion.
I'm just saying, that'd be, that'd be a significant expense with the road going in there. And that would make a nice dent in that.
Yeah, I agree. All right. Anything more? Any other thoughts on this?
I'm sure we'll be discussing more.
Yeah, and I did include.
As we think of things.
Yeah, I did include a link too. It's a, again, a voluntary database from that other, kind of showing what other cities are spending money on for ARPA. So if you have.
All over the board. Did you?
It's all over. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it definitely is.
All right. If there's nothing else, then we will adjourn. We are adjourned.
Are, are we blasting out the citywide cleanup? Because I thought it was June, but did it move to May?
Uh, citywide cleanup is May fourteenth.
Has it always been that?
Yeah, it's, I think last year it was May twentieth, no, it was May fifteenth. Last year?